Welcome to the Smithfield Town Council Committee Meeting, April 22nd, 2024. Time is after 3:00 PM. Let the record reflect that we do have a quorum. I do know that Mr. Brooks was not going to be here today, and we're... Leslie, have you heard anything more?
I have not.
Okay, sure. But the record reflect, we do have a quorum, and we will proceed. The town manager, Michael Stallings, is remote today. Michael, are you on the phone with us?
Yes, sir, I'm here.
Okay, good deal. All right. The first item that we have is the Public Safety Committee with members Collins, Councilman Gibbs, and Brooks. Councilman Gibbs, would you handle it for me, please? Oh, I'm sorry, public comments first. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Give you a chance to get things together. First thing is public comments. We'll have one person sign up, Mr. Tommy Garing. Mr. Garing, come forward, please. Good to have you here today. You state your name and your address for the record, please, sir.
Tommy Garing, 215 Cary Street, Smithfield, Virginia.
Thank you, sir.
I have something for the members. If they can follow along as I speak. I've talked to a few of the town council people about speed on Cary Street numerous times, and I've never seen anything done except for... They finally did do a speed study, I guess it's been the last week or two. So it's going to be interesting to see what the results is. But the paper I gave you is a map of Pierceville and/or the Grange, I guess. And everything... Everybody keeps saying that everything's conceptual right now, so...
Everything is what?
Conceptual.
Okay.
So there can be changes. Up at the top, if you see a little black, little S, that's going from the main road that goes through the Grange. Continue that up and just run that into Cary Street and make Cary Street a dead end. And that would take care of all the traffic complaints that everybody has on Cary Street and quite a few of them on Gray Street, too, because all that Mill Swamp traffic and all this coming up and down won't be there anymore. It'll be going through the Grange. And you can see at the beginning of... on the map where Karen... I guess Karen Way is. Take it from Main Street and keep Gray Street and run it right into where Karen Way is going to be, and just run that all the way through to where that's the main road that would go all the way through instead of, you know, all the other traffic having to go from Main Street on out to the county. So I know they're doing the town, the speed study, traffic study, whatever it is, and it's going to be interesting to see what the suggestions are, because I know we had that meeting and a lot of things came up, but this wouldn't really cost a whole lot because the overpass is there already. You'd make it a dead end right past Goose Hill, and all the people in the county can come through. People on Cary Street and Gray Street won't be affected with all that traffic anymore.
So you're saying what you would do is run off of Mill Swamp Road into the Grange?
Yes. Change it, because it could change this from Mill Swamp when you cross the county line. So you go... You have the town property and where the fire... All the fire trucks are going to be soon. That's over the overpass. Soon as you come over the overpass, tie it in to where Karen Way is down where it looks like they have a little cul-de-sac next to that pond at the top, and have this go straight through and put a stoplight there at Main Street and what would be a main entrance going in instead of having to go up where they want it to across from... They were talking about doing it across from Church Manor and coming in, and you have to make all these turns and stop something. You know, this would be a straight shot from Main Street.
All right. Thank you.
Anyways, I just wanted to... You know, we've talked and talked and talked about traffic and speed and all that, and, you know, I've yet to see a Smithfield cop car there like I used to see back in the old days. Now all these traffic studies are done, so it shouldn't skew the traffic studies, is what I was told why they weren't doing it.
Right. All right. Any questions of Mr. Garing by members of council? Thank you, Tommy. Appreciate your suggestion.
Like I say, they keep saying it's all conceptual, so changes can't be made.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's the only person I have signed up. Anyone else wish to be heard under public comments? They're seeing none. I think now we are back to the Public Safety Committee. Are you ready now, Mr. Gibbs, for this?
Yeah, I was ready to begin with, Mayor.
Good deal. Thank you. Please proceed, sir.
Police Department, before we get off into the report, I just want to thank the officers. Recently had an interaction with Officer... Could you please pass it on to Chief Howe. We had an opportunity to talk. We talked about 30 minutes about what policing looks like, and I was super impressed
Good.
with the answers that I got and watching the interaction and how things were de-escalated instead of escalating it to the next level. And I was like, wow, that's policing at its best, so.
Good deal.
Thank you.
Great to hear.
So, operational report?
You guys have our operational report in front of you. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
I don't... I looked it over and it looks like staying busy for sure. I would like to echo Councilman Gibbs' comments. I thought the Wine and Brew Fest went considering the traffic dilemma that we were confronted with. I received some reports as to how long it took actually to get out of there at peak times and things like that, and, you know, if you've ever been to the State Fair or Richmond Race or anything like that, and see the delays or getting out of the amphitheater or things like that, I think y'all did a great job. So I just want to tell you that.
Thank you. We received the same thing, just that it was like 30 minutes to get through, but we never received any complaints.
I'd like to also think State Police helped a little bit at the intersection, too, so we really appreciate the partnership that we have with them as well. Any questions? Do y'all have any questions? All right, Councilman Gibbs, next?
Next is the Operational Volunteer Fire Department.
Good afternoon, councilmen and women. Jeff Smith with the Smithfield Volunteer Fire Department. We had 62 runs of call in February, 63 in March. We had one working house fire in Rushmere and one large brush fire by the... I want to say it's the solar field near that in the county. Other than that, it's been a pretty quiet month, and we appreciate the town letting us train on the houses where they tear them down on Great Springs Road, bringing a lot of training to the young firefighters, teaching them vertical ventilation and search and rescue at the houses. And we had another successful truck school class in March, too.
Anything... Question that can answer for you?
No questions.
Jeff, this fire at the solar farm. Has there been discussions about how to handle that in the future, or have you studied some of that about what's...
We've been out training with solar panels. I don't think it was actually on the farm. I'm not sure quite what happened. It was near the farm, solar panel farm, but I'm not quite 100% sure what caused it, but it was a large brush out there near it.
Okay.
But in the future, we've trained with the company on what to do. They took us out to the farm near Olive Drive, that one. We walk through the fields with them and show us what to stay away from and everything. And basically is to separate everything, just fire inside their fence, and they would take care of it once something happens. Because you just can't just go ahead and put them going on it until they shut the power off.
Mike, I know that that was a discussion at the last Board of Supervisors meeting, too. I can't tell you what timeframe it was, but the developer or the solar panel partner did do a presentation before the Board of Supervisors, so you might want to go back and look at what he had to say.
They've talked about it in the Energy Task Force meetings, and basically they're just saying they're going to let it burn. I mean, I'm not real sure what starts a fire out there, or what equipment catches on fire, or what takes place if it does. So I guess my question is, for the safety of you guys, and I wouldn't want y'all going out there and doing something even though you might have been told to do something.
We won't do nothing without their...
Right.
They'll be out there with us, containing inside their fence. Don't let it outside the fence, but they would help us take control of that. They have to shut all the power off. Even once the power's shut off, we still got to worry about the sun beating on the solar panels.
I know. It came before the Planning Commission, and there's a protocol that they follow for fires, whether it's actually the panel themselves or in the surrounding area. There's a set protocol that should come with every... I know for the last couple panels that came, solar farms that came before the Planning Commission, there was a, like I said, standard operation procedure for different type fires.
They actually discussed this particular situation at the last Board of Supervisors meeting.
I guess my concern is the safety of, you know, of you guys being out there, you know, because I know it's not just the heat on fire, it's also chemicals that are going in there.
I think saying we contain it inside their fence and work with them in what we have to do to extinguish the fire.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Item three?
Yes, sir. We have our operational update from Brian Carroll. Chief Carroll?
Thank you all for having us again. I just want to touch on the fire incident again, because it's in my neighborhood, so it kind of hits close to home. That fire was on the solar property. It was not under panels, but it was on a main transmission line that they entered that has that afternoon that had a fault, and if they believe that jumped at the ground. So that was not contained inside their fence areas. The fire truck ended up doing a back burn on that fire to put it out. So 100% believe it to the solar without a doubt. Operationally, we are just north of 1,000 calls already this year in the first 115 days or so, which is pretty on track for where we are. I want to touch on the Gray Street project for just a minute. I know there's been some conversation about that. While Gray Street project's certainly going to interrupt the traffic flow and things public safety-wise and probably more so residential-wise, we don't think that's nearly the impact that the South Church Street project has. Gray Street has several side streets entering into it. We're going to be able to get to those houses from multiple directions rather than just constantly down Gray Street, and that seems to be the concern of some business owners and others. And the other thing I would point out, too, is that we have only won six calls in the last 12 months on Gray Street, and that's a pretty average over a 12-month period, it looks like, just from looking at all the data from the last several years. So there's not a tremendous call volume on Gray Street. Now, there's a lot of calls at the line, James Street, but there are, again, there are multiple side streets that access those venues from different directions. So Gray Street is not nearly the concern to us that South Church Street project was. The other big operational thing that we're facing in EMS is an unfunded mandate by the state. Mr. Garing, you may or may not remember this. We carry drug boxes on all the meds for ever and ever and ever. Since the inception of the drug box program, we have swapped those boxes at the hospital, which meant we use the drug, put the box to the pharmacy, they either pull the drug back in the box or they swap the boxes one to one. The state, in its infinite wisdom, pushed by somebody, obviously, has decided that the hospitals will no longer exchange drug boxes. What that means to EMS is, across the state, every individual agency is going to have to have a DEA number. We're going to have to put it in our own controlled facility, lock it, secure it, and come up with a process for refilling our own meds.
How can you do that when you don't have a pharmacist on call within your...
I think that's all logistics that has got to be worked out. It's got to be worked out across the state, so we're not the first one in this. We're the only one in this. Mandated by the state, pharmacy board, we don't have any real options on this. It comes under effect, remember, I think. But more importantly, what I see as a leader is, this is an expensive venture for us, because now when we exchange a drug box, we exchange it based on the date of the use or the oldest drug in it that's close to expire. From this point on, we're going to have to maintain all these meds with no opportunity to exchange them unless we come up with a better system, and we're going to eat a lot of expense over the life of medication. That's what I see happening to the people that finance EMS.
Questions, Chairman? So, I'm... Kind of like my feel. So they're re-looking... They're re-looking at... Because you're not the only... We're not the only volunteer fire department that's coming up with opposition, you know, made traction in the news. Like, it is a really big push for them to go back and take a look at what they're actually doing with the expired medications, because most volunteer fire departments is going to blow their budget, you know, when you're looking at, you know, Narcan or, you know, lidocaine or, you know, whatever it are.
Controlled meds.
Especially your controlled meds.
But the other problem is, a lot of this is not expired medication. This is basically one-for-one. If you... Once you pop the seal on that drug box, the whole thing has to be inventoried. It has to be assured that everything in there is good, but do you have any background as to why they have decided to do this, or is anybody...
By the state pharmacy board, that's all.
Well, somebody's got to have... Somebody has got to, at the hospital level or at some level, ask for a change in something that has worked so well for so many years.
I suspect there's a bean counter somewhere that decided it's better we eat it than they eat it, but that would be the latest term of equipment, but it's got to be expensive for us. Number one, we've got to... We've got to come up with this room in every station now. Keep in mind, you've got to do it in six stations now, because you can't have one central... You know, a medic from Hartford can't come to Alawite to restock drugs at 2:00 in the morning. You've got to have that ability throughout the county. So it doesn't really affect us, and I mean, I can't imagine how this affects rural Virginia and smaller spread out localities.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, would it be too much of a problem to draft a letter to whoever that has to go to? I want the answer to that question. That, to me, that is just... That border's on asinine, if I don't know, and I...
I can hear.
As I said, this program has been working so well for so long, and now, and not to mention, it's going to subject you at times to a DEA audit if you have a drug that... Something happens. I mean, I know things happen. I was... Not to get too in-depth, but, you know, I want to have a procedure done, which I won't get into that one time, and I asked, have you started the IV yet? They said, yeah, we have. I said, I can tell because it's running down my arm, because the plumbing wasn't correct. So that's... That person had to take and do paperwork on that, and it's just going to be one more additional thing that a volunteer group, for the most part, shouldn't be confronted with.
It's certainly going to be an administrative challenge, and more than that, the providers in the field are going to accept a lot more responsibility now. You know, when they go into the hospital now and they have a waste on a controlled substance, they waste it in front of a nurse, and nurse signs off on it, and you move on to the pharmacy. Now you're going to assume all that liability, responsibility on the provider.
Well, if you would like for me to send a letter to the Board of Pharmacy on behalf of the town, I would be glad to do that.
You need to send it...
Mr. Reddick?
To the governor as well, and...
As well, absolutely.
It needs to go... Just the pharmacy board doesn't care, the governor, I...
Well...
To Mr. Gibbs' point, there's been several news articles about it, locally.
Okay.
And I find operational review, to the gentleman's comments on Cary Street traffic, I will say that I know the police officer, not because I got stopped, because I see where they're hiding it. Running rate are actively working Cary Street going down Mill Swamp Road, because I go there two or three times a day, so. Any questions for me?
No questions. We'll work on that letter. We'll work on that letter. So that's been something in the newspaper, so.
I think that's all we've got on the public safety. The next is the Finance Committee. Chairman Pack, Smith, and Butler, Vice Mayor, or Councilman Smith, who's going to handle this one?
I'll take it since you've got the...
Public buildings.
Public buildings, Valerie, is that all right?
That's fine, I think.
Okay. March financial statements. Laura?
Thank you. Mayor and town council, as you have your packet in front of you, I'm just going to get on some hot points. Revenues overall right now are $6,598,48. The expenditures are slightly above that at $7,579,300. Our real estate bills will go out, we're targeting May the 1st. They're... I hope they'll be ready next week for me to take a look at, and they have to go through some review and review and review to make sure they're correct, and then they go out. I wanted to give the citizens at least 35 days to go through that and then give it again after 35, but we really can't do that. We're going to try to use maintenance, but that's just not going to work. There were just too many issues revolving around that, so we're going to go with the broad system that we've been using for quite a while. So... Can we repeat all that?
No, we can hear you. Quick, you can continue.
Give me this one. Can you hear me now? I can talk even louder. Okay. How about that?
Yep.
All right, there we go. So our delinquent bills went out. I want to talk briefly about the delinquent bills. As we know, with personal property, there's a way to get folks to pay that, being that you can't get... You get a DMV stop on your car or on your tag or on your license. But with real estate, there's not, and I'm taking a look at the delinquent real estate to see how far we are behind. I've seen the same names over and over and over again. I've asked for a report to be run so I can see what those are and to see what we can do about collecting those, so I can give you all a firm number on what they are and see what we can do about it, if that sounds good.
It's just lawyers. Three years delinquent?
For...
Real estate?
No.
No, if... No. If they're three years delinquent, you can bring a suit
Good.
to sell their property.
Wow.
That's a real attention getter.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
So if you get... If you can run a list of any taxpayers who are three years delinquent, we can send a notice to them telling them that if they don't bring their taxes current, there's going to be a tax sale. So that's... I mean, that's how you collect... It's... The DMV stop is a lot easier because...
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, but if you have significant real estate bills that are outstanding, that's how you do it.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
So all you have to do is just let us know who
You bet.
your hit list is, and we can take care of that.
Thank you. We'll do that.
Laura, do you have an idea, on average, what our delinquency look like?
Not yet, but I can get that for you. I was looking at that today amongst a couple of other things, and I haven't... I want to give you better numbers than what I have in my mind. I saw a couple that I didn't really think were right. Second, since we just collected some, I have to update my list.
Bill, to your recollection, have we ever done...
I've never been asked to do a tax sale in 30 years, ever.
Well, if we're three years behind, you'll be asked to do so.
But generally, what happens, though, is...
They'll get it done.
The county has traditionally had a law firm on retainer to bring tax suits, because usually it's... Since their bills are a lot bigger than ours, they really go after it. And if they bring suit, then we are... We piggyback on their... They have to name the town as a co-defendant,
Mm-hmm.
and then because we file an answer, we get paid. But if you find that we have accounts that are only delinquent in the town...
Yep.
Well, then we can take... If they're significant, we... The first step is a demand ladder, and the second step is you file the suit. And, I mean, I did them... I was on contract with the county 30 years ago to do that, so I've done them. I just have never had to do one for the town.
So I guess, Laura, if I may, Mike, I guess what you're saying is some people are paying their county taxes but aren't paying their town?
Yes, sir.
Well, there's a reason for that.
Because we don't go after them.
You haven't done anything in 30 years. You haven't been asked to do anything.
Nobody's ever asked me to do it.
Let's cut that off.
You bet. We can do that. All right. So today, we had the banks, and two of them showed up for the pre-conference, and this was just a pre-proposal conference to talk about if they had any questions. Nobody had any questions. I think they had one or two. So the RFP is due on the 3rd of May, which will be a couple of weeks from now, and after that, we're going to review the RFPs, and hopefully we'll have a decision by the end of May. Let's see. We can talk about utility taxes, consumption taxes, and sales taxes. All seem to be tracking to where they were the year before, which is what we want to have. I updated the financial statement, so it has all kinds of details regarding all the expenditures and all the revenue as well. If you want to flip back to the cash balances, we can talk about those. And you have a copy of the forecast that I had to see where we are supposed to be towards the end of the year, and it hasn't really changed at all, so we should be a little bit above what anticipate it should be compared to what our budget is. I want to talk a little bit about the earnings that we have on our VIP account and the sweep account. So right now, the total for the year that we've earned on the VIP is $211,973. Just for this month, for everything, is $47,244. If this continues with $47,000 each month, we will realize $141,733 interest for a total of $353,706. Just as FYI, last year, we were at $55,776. So, yeah. Do I have a goal in mind where I'd like to hit within a year or so? And that would be an additional $3 million, but we'll see about that.
Keep walking away.
You did a good job.
Every penny adds up, doesn't it? Okay. So if we take a look at where we are on the investment benchmark report, I think you have that in your packet. Town bank is paying us... The earning rate right now is 5.69. The VIP is a little bit lower at 5.47, but we're still above the 90-day T-bill rate, and if I could get every bit of balances that I have, squeeze every bit out of those bank accounts, we could realize an annual increase of $775,000. So that's where I came up with the $3 million. But if we go out with the... When we go out with the RFP and if we do whatever we're going to do, we're going to reduce our bank accounts, as I've been talking about, but we really don't want to do anything until then. And I finalized our documentation that shows what we need to do once we send out the RFP, if we change, if we don't change, so we have a game plan. Any questions?
You've already covered the cash balances in the VIP, so...
I got everything.
I don't have to worry about that anymore.
Jumped right into it.
And then the only thing I have is invoices over $20,000 requiring council authorization is Athens Building Corporation, Windsor Castle Park Boardwalk Restoration Project, and that is...
I can't find the total on that.
Yeah, I'm looking at that now. It was... Is that the payment of $30,784?
Yes, sir.
Forty-seven? Okay.
That takes care of kayak here.
Pardon?
Kayak here.
Kayak, okay.
Yes, sir.
And that brings us to... Is this correct, about 99.8%? Is that what you're looking at? So there's only $1,400 left on the remaining work?
Yes.
Okay.
To be completed this year.
Okay. Well, that's all I have, so...
I guess we need to send out one to the council for...
Yeah, we'll send that in for consideration.
I do have a question, Mike.
Yes.
Directed to Amy. Did we vote on individual bridge work out at the park, or how are we doing that?
No, man. We've... Y'all allotted a certain amount from ARPA funds to the bridge projects, so we went as far as that money is allotted and will likely come back to you to ask for more money in the FY '25 budget to finish out.
Because the reason I ask that, I know that the Mason Street Bridge
Yes.
is one of the larger bridges there, too.
It is. And then the Ravine Bridge inside the park is another one that we want to do. They're currently working on the Overlook Pier,
Okay.
but we will pay for that after July 1.
Okay.
And we also still have the Fishing Pier to do.
The Fishing, okay. The Fishing, okay.
Any questions? I'm gonna close the finance.
Nexus Parks and Recreation Committee members, uh, Councilman Gibbs is chair, Vice Mayor Butler, and, Brooks. Chairman Gibbs.
All righty, so we have a, um, a letter from, uh, a bid for the, uh, complex, for the concession stand. I'm, Amy, I'm gonna read that letter for us.
We do. Um, Michael, do you want to take it from here, or?
Yeah, I'll start, and then, uh, Craig, then Amy can take it from there, but as you guys know, that we've been working to, on design for concession stand building at the Luke Sports Complex that will service the football fields. Uh, we did receive bids for that project, the look bid came in at six hundred and twenty, what, a thousand nine hundred, which is Athens Building Corporation, the same folks that are doing our bridges in the park. Uh, the next lowest bid was right at eight hundred thousand dollars, so they were substantially below the next lowest bidder. However, we only currently have four hundred and forty-five thousand dollars allocated to this project, and it was all ARCA money that we did, uh, at the initial onset of ARCA funds. Um, once we include the construction admin costs and allow a ten percent contingency for anything unforeseen that we, we encountered on the project, total project budget would be six hundred ninety-six thousand seven hundred and ninety dollars, which puts us short by, if that, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So, in order to move forward with this, we will need to put some additional funds on the project. Um, since it was originally funded with ARCA, that would be my recommended source of funding for the project. We do currently still have just shy of one point two billion left in unallocated ARCA funds. So even after we appropriated this extra funding to this project, we would still have about nine hundred and thirty thousand dollars left in ARCA funds available for other projects. But if specific questions with the, the building, the bids, anything of that nature, Greg from Kimley Horn is there to be able to answer those, and, um, you know, we'd be interested in questions, and the council wants to move forward.
What I look at is, the funds are available. Um, the project is shy of two hundred and fifty-one thousand seven hundred and ninety dollars. We, if we pull that from the ARPA form, it'll still leave nine hundred twenty-eight thousand six hundred sixty-one dollars and ninety-six cents, so I recommend we move forward with the concession stands, 'cause I visit the concession stands, and, and it's, it's cramped. I mean, I don't see how they operate now without stepping on each other in order to operate, and the concession stands are profitable.
Mm-hmm. And this will also provide the bathrooms at that field that are so badly wanted and need it.
And, and since it's in the ECO, it does have to be built to a slightly higher standard, so there is brick involved in this, and it does have that second story, so it will mimic the look of the other building that's already there. Um, so that, that adds some sort of cost trying to comply with those ECO guidelines and making it up to the quality that's already out there in Luke Sports.
One question, I'd, I'd like to get it on the record. What was the next bid?
Seven hundred and ninety-nine.
Thousand was the next lowest bid.
Seven ninety-nine. Seven ninety-nine.
Seven ninety-nine, which is a difference of what, two, three?
Almost.
A hundred and seventy-five thousand, well, a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars is the difference in the bid.
Well...
And we received six bids, and the other five were in that eight hundred thousand to a billion range. Um, Athens Building Corporation was, again, substantially lower. We know that they do good quality work, um, and I think they, they clearly showed that they wanted to continue to work for the town to spend the field by Eric Ressing's bid.
Well, I used to do takeoffs and stuff on drawings or whatever with a difference that much, I just hope they didn't, and, and Councilman Smith, and I think everybody else can attest to this, I hope they didn't miss something during the course of the takeoff. Um, but if they did, that's the problem. I, just like the South Church Street Bridge Project, or the Gray Street, or should I say the Gray Street Project, or whatever, my concern is, if we don't do it now, what's the cost gonna be if we put it off and continue to, to kick the can down the road? And I think with a, with a bid, it's what, two hundred thousand dollars, I think you said, almost less, I think we would be remiss in, in not, not moving forward. So, um, with four people here, um, under Robert's rules, I could, I can talk a little bit more, um, from the mayor's perspective, so I, I would, I would say that we would move along with the project. And use, and use, and use the ARCA funds to, uh, to make up the shortfall.
Yes, sir, I mean, the need is definitely not going to go away, the cost will do nothing, but, but grow, and I know, uh, the folks at Kimley Horn have reviewed the bids, and to my understanding, everything here, and is all up and up as far as what's included in the price.
Yes.
Any comments, or, please state your name for the record.
Greg Schmidt with Kimley Horn, oh, sorry, that's loud. Forty-five twenty-five Main Street, uh, Suite one thousand, Virginia Beach. Um, that is correct, as Michael stated, we have reviewed the bids, everything checks out, they are responsible, qualified bidder. Um, what, to your question, Mr. Mayor, what allows them to be a little bit more cost competitive is they actually do self-perform a number of the rough carpentry work, fabrication work, so they're allowed to come in at a better price, um, with their skill sets that they have in-house.
I just hope that during the course of this, we don't forget about the fact that we still have a maintenance building that we need to build as well, that we've been, been looking at, so just because this is being built, we don't put that off, so, um, and I know that's, that's near and dear to Amy's heart, and, as well, and it needs to be, with the equipment and stuff that we've got, so, um, that's all I've got, sir.
So I make a motion that we approve allocating-
You can't make a motion, what we'll do is, we'll just send it-
Okay.
Send it to Councilman.
To the Action, Action Section, Council. Same thing, only different.
Only different.
Yeah. I think that's all we've got on...
Just one quick little item, this is, uh-
Uh, here we go.
This is Greg's second meeting with me today. He was, uh, meeting with the Windsor Castle Foundation and myself earlier today, and the Windsor Castle master plan is real close to completion, so it's very exciting and great amenities that it features, and so, thank you for all your help with that.
Great.
Thank you.
See, that wasn't long.
Anything else? No, what, Parks Recreation, anything else?
No, sir.
Thank you. The next is Public Buildings and Welfare, members Vice Mayor Butler, uh, Councilman Collins, and Councilman Pack. Uh, Vice Mayor Butler.
Um, the first thing on the Public Buildings and Welfare agenda is the MOU Building Code Enforcement Agreement, and that's Michael.
Yes, ma'am. Um, we've been working with our, like, county for a while now on this MOU. As you know, they do all building inspections in the town limits on behalf of the town. Uh, state code does say that we, once we, if the population we're at, that we can do our own inspections, and however, it's not, it's, I would not recommend we do that, it would not be financially viable for us this time to go out and do that on our own. So we've been working on an MOU with the county that governs them doing the building inspections for us in the town limits. So in the package is that MOU, the board supervisors has adopted it, um, the Intergovernmental Committee looked at this and had some discussion on it recently. The one thing that moving forward, that, you know, I just want on our end to keep an eye on, and I'll do this with the county administrator, is the cost allocation in it, just to make sure that everything that we are contributing money towards is actually what it should be. Uh, the biggest thing is just making sure that when they look at the total building inspections budget, that once we pay our per rad of share, we're actually paying on the services that they are providing in town. So if there's something in that building inspections budget that really has nothing to do with the town, we just need to make sure that we're allocating that correctly, and that'll just be something I have to stay on top of with the county administrator as we review those budgets annually. Uh, we will have to pay our portion of the, the delta between permit fees collected and cost to operate the department. So if they spend a hundred thousand dollars to run the department and only collect eighty thousand dollars in permit fees, we will pay our portion of that twenty thousand dollars based off the number of permits that were issued in the town limits. So that number may fluctuate from year to year, and that's just a piece that I'm gonna have to work on with the county as we continue to move forward to make sure that that budget number, um, it is something we can plan for and have an idea of what to expect each year, so it doesn't fluctuate hugely. Um, but otherwise, the other piece of it is how we handle the enforcement of building inspection issues in town limits, where there did some gray area in the past, and Mr. Reddick and Mr. Jones have worked that out as far as the attorneys on, at what point in time do they end all the violation for us to continue prosecution in the courts. Um, but I believe, you know, Mr. Reddick is satisfied with how that's laid out now, so we recommend that we move forward with this, knowing that we're gonna have to continue to tweak as we go, and just make sure that, uh, we keep an eye on the budget carry effects.
Madam Vice Mayor? You have a question, please? Could I, could I hear from Mr., not, not that I don't understand everything that our town manager said, but I would like to hear from, since Mr. Reddick's name has been mentioned a couple times during the comments, I'd like to hear from Mr. Reddick, um, if he has any concerns, or, uh, any, any more elaboration on, on, on this issue. Mr. Reddick?
We, Mr. Jones and I talked about this, and he, there has been a, a, he has the same problem, and that is that the building official has not always gotten him involved as soon as he should have, they should have, because, um, they, these matters come off on, up on the docket, and it, and he's found that he should have been involved earlier, and maybe they could have involved the court actions, and so they've had a discussion about that, and, and they're gonna give me the same notice that they've been giving him, and hopefully it's more timely than it has been. And it's not a criticism of them, they just didn't know exactly when he thought it was reasonable, reasonable for him to be involved, earlier rather than later, and so I don't have any problem with that. One thing that, um, we also talked about that Michael didn't touch on is, um, we've always had the concern about the fact that, that complaints on the condition of properties in the town and the county are complaint-driven. In other words, what, nobody, uh, actually goes around and looks for problems, they only respond at the county level on a complaint filed by a citizen concerning the condition of a property. Um, we probably want to be more proactive in that, than that, and we had a discussion with the county and the building official, and he's willing to deputize one of the town's staff to be a deputy building official, so that he could do, uh, probably it would be Joseph, but that's something for Michael and Tammy to discuss, but, um, he could be more proactive in pursuing building code violations, because if you remember, in the historic district, we used to use the historic preservation ordinance to do that, and the, the court said, "No, we can't anymore." And so the only way to fall back to, to pursue that is gonna be through the building code, and that's what we want to do. And so if we have a deputy building official on town staff, we can be more proactive about dealing with those kinds of issues, and so I think, um, in that regard, it's gonna be an improvement.
Um, I do have a question in reference to that and the MOU. Uh, that won't fall under expenses for the county, that will be a town expense directly-
Yeah, right.
-if we have our own deputy-
It would, yeah, the town would still just have the expense of that employee, he would just have the authority to bring building code violations, um, within the town limits under the maintenance code.
Okay.
Greg, Vice Mayor Butler, that would be specifically for property maintenance issues. We wouldn't be doing building inspection, we would just be doing property maintenance issues.
Okay, thank you, Michael.
Yes, ma'am.
Any more questions? If not, we will move this on, uh, to Town Council, um, on Tuesday night for Agenda Action. Uh, number two, amend contract for updating the entrance corridor overlay guidelines and the historic district guidelines. Tammy?
Yes, thank you, good afternoon. This is just an amendment to our agreement. Uh, our agreement originally stated that it would, uh, the contract would expire in April. Uh, we are still working with the consultants on drafting, um, these guidelines. We did get a late start because of the Grange, and so we did have some internal projects that came in at the same time, and we just want to make sure that we can provide a quality of results, so we're just asking to extend the contract.
Okay. Any questions or discussion on that?
I've, I've read it, and that's all, basically, in my humble opinion, that's all it does as well, so I have no problem with it.
Okay, Tammy, looks good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, number three on the agenda, uh, we had a discussion, uh, about honoring, uh, the former mayor, James Chapman, on our, at our last committee meeting, and I asked Michael to add number three to the agenda, because it wasn't originally on the agenda, and I'd like to make some clarification from our discussion on, uh, last month. Um, we discussed a bus being donated by the family, and we also, uh, discussed naming a street in honor of the former mayor, um, and I like to reverse those options. Um, if the town is looking to do something in honor of the former mayor, um, I like for that first option to be naming a street. Um, the family would like to do something in honor of their uncle, you know, in sometime in the future, um, and I like to recommend that, um, um, the Town Council at that time make a decision whether or not to accept the donation from the family. But today, I'd like to make a recommendation to name Quail Street in honor of the former mayor, and it be named as an honorary street. And I'm open for suggestions or comments? Recommendations or con, and all comments?
Yeah, I have another comment.
Okay.
Um, this allows them to keep their address, right, of Quail Street, and this is honorary street for Mr. Chapman?
Yes.
Okay. I think that helps with a lot of headaches in the future for these people that live on that street.
Oh, definitely, 'cause I told Tammy-
It still recognizes, you know-
Yeah.
-his name on there.
I, I told Tammy I didn't realize that there were twenty-two families on Quail Street, and I, I was not aware of the honorary naming, uh, until, uh, Amy and Tammy mentioned that, but it doesn't require any, uh, house address changes.
Um, just a question logistically, um, what, what would you use, uh, Michael, um, or Jesse or whoever, use a sign that would go up under Quail Street that would be similar to kayak, uh, or Dan Smith Way, is that, is that, Vice Mayor, is that what you had in mind, or whatever, or?
If I'm not mistaken, out in Windsor Castle Park, Dan Smith is on one side-
It is.
-kayak is on the other side, so they're not above each other.
No, they aren't, but they're also not, they're also town, uh, roads and alleys and whatever they basically call them, um, over there, 'cause nobody lives on them, so they're basically, that's why they're yellow in color with that. Certain designation as far as street colors, you have brown and white signs, you have yellow and white signs, and then you have your, your, your normal street sign, which is green and white. So I'm just asking what, what you have in mind as far as that, 'cause you can put it right down below it, from an honorary perspective, you could put, you got whatever you want to put on the sign, on the same street pole, which would make it an honorary sign, but you would still leave Quail Street on there, because under the nine-one-one system, the police system, EMS system, it will still be in the system, and they'll probably have to do a cross-match with it, um, whatever we ultimately name it, in case somebody gets confused and says, you know, "I need police on James Chapman Way," or something like that, but my question is, what, what are we thinking as far as logistics are concerned?
Now, I'm leaving the logistics up to the people that know how to do that.
Okay.
Now, the ones that, the one that I've seen in Newport News as far as Fine Arts Avenue and J. Clap Morris-
Blue and white.
-they both have, uh, well, I think the Fine Arts Avenue goes to the left- they both have, uh, well, I think the Fine Arts Avenue goes to the left, and J. Clyde Morris goes to the right. And if I'm not mistaken, I think the Allen Iverson Street naming is right above Sixteenth Street.
It's right below Sixteenth Street.
Sixteenth Street in Newport News. So I'm hoping that Michael and whoever within the town's, you know, department, you know, decides on what just to do that.
With the honorary aspect of it, is, is what we have for Dan Smith Way already in Windsor Castle Park. That's the only honorary s- street slash that I'm aware of in the town.
Well, yeah, but I didn't, I didn't think it was two names at Dan Smith. I thought that that was just-
It is only one name, that is correct, it is only one name.
Yeah, it's only one name there.
But if you go and leave Quail Street, Quail Street, and you take the sign off of there that says Quail Street, and put James Chapman as the only sign there, that's gonna throw a, a wrench into that.
From my understanding, honorary, the street name stays there, and the honorary sign, I don't know if it goes above or below. I don't have any problem with that.
Gotcha. All right, we're good. We are good. Understood.
Any other discussion?
Think it's a great idea.
Thank you. If not, uh, I will close Public Buildings and Welfare.
Okay. The only thing we've got left is we will be addressing the, uh, minutes from the April second meeting at the next meeting as well. Um, is there anything else to come before committee today? Thank you all very much, thank the public for coming and joining us, and those that joined us on live stream, thank you very much. Meeting adjourned.